Okay, I guess we're gonna go ahead and start. I am filling in for Chairman Thackson because she is not feeling well today, so...
Well, she actually had the flu last week. She said I could share.
And we appreciate that, yes.
I 100% appreciate it. I don't want her in here. No residuals, we don't need it.
So I guess I'm gonna turn it over to Julie for our work session meeting.
Sure. Okay. Our first case is UP 2319, and our staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. She'll be presenting on the application today.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners.
Good afternoon.
My name is Valerie Malzone. I'm a senior planner with the city of Portsmouth. The application before you today is a request for a use permit to construct a three-unit townhouse development at 4423 King Street. The subject property is approximately .2 acres in size, and it's zoned urban residential, or UR. The property currently contains a two-story, approximately 1,882 square foot detached, single-family dwelling that was constructed in 1910. There are currently no off-street vehicle parking spaces on the property. The property is located within the AE 9 flood zone and the resource management area of the Chesapeake Bay preservation area. The surrounding area consists of residential uses. Single-family dwellings and urban residential, or UR, surround the subject property to the north, south, east, and west. An eight-unit townhouse development, zoned multifamily urban residential, or URM, is located to the east along the same block face as the subject property. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing single-family residence and construct a three-unit townhouse development at 4423 King Street. An approved use permit is required for townhouse dwellings within the UR zoning district. Each townhouse unit will be two stories and will include a front-loaded, single-car garage and a single-car driveway to accommodate the two off-street vehicle parking spaces required for townhouse dwellings. The conceptual site plan and elevations also include covered front porches, concrete backyard patios, and six-foot white vinyl privacy fencing along the rear of the property. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as appropriate for low-to-medium-density, single-family residential uses. Staff is recommending the approval of the applicant's request with the recommended conditions. The proposal meets several goals of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan, including increasing the supply of income-diverse housing options. In addition, the applicant has made efforts to modify the proposed development to further meet the goals of the Comprehensive Plan. Following the recommendation of planning staff, the applicant has reduced the width of the proposed driveways from 18 feet in width to 12 feet in order to maintain conformity with the surrounding neighborhood and reduce the stormwater impacts the proposed development would have in the already flood-prone area. To my knowledge, the planning department has received two public comments regarding this application. One has been provided in your agenda packet, and one was sent to you this morning and printed out as well. I will stand by for questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
So, we did receive a fairly lengthy document today. And naturally, historical preservation is important. Is there...I guess maybe this might be for Attorney Miller. I'm not sure if you've got a chance to review this lengthy document as well, but is there any protections that we need to consider in allowing this to take place?
Yeah, I haven't received the document yet or looked at it, so is there anything specific in there that's...
I'm a fast reader, sir. But 109 pages is pretty robust in a couple of hours.
Right.
There was one line that caught my eye, though. It looked as if they said they're looking to make that style of home historical, historically preserved. I don't know if it currently stands as being historically preserved. They're saying there's merit in it. I think the William &amp; Mary study was saying that there was merit in it, but I don't think it's actually been legally deemed as such. So I think they're saying, hey, maybe one day, these type of houses will be protected, these kit homes. But from what I saw, again, it was a hefty read. What I saw, though, they were saying it wasn't legally binding yet.
Talking about the existing...
Yes.
And it's not located in a historic district?
Well, I know that, but I...
Yeah, or on the...what was the state?
State registry.
It's not on the Virginia Landmarks Register or the National Historic Registry of Historic Places. So there currently aren't any protections on it.
I imagine the applicant will have information about sizes and things about nature, market rate, setting prices, and all of that. That would be something we'd want to ask them.
Okay, I had one question. As far as you saying that the applicant worked with you regarding the size of the driveway, obviously for, you know, impervious area, is the garage counting as one parking place?
Yeah, you can count a single-car garage as one of your parking spaces, and then the driveway would serve as the second.
As the second one. It just seems, I guess, pretty obvious that no one wants to, you know, shuffle their cars, you know, when they're the first one in and need to be the first one out. It is located on that corner where, you know, I did go by, you know, and see cars parked along there. I think there's even been, at times, I don't know if, like, a police car was parked, or sheriff's car was parked on the corner there. So I don't know how long the house has been vacant. Do you know?
I do not know how long the house has been vacant. The applicant might.
Okay, okay. Because I do see, you know, them using the side street there, and I'm just wondering if... If...I know engineering has to review the site plan, but if somebody parks in that driveway on the corner, I don't know how that would impact, you know, the people coming off of that corner trying to, you know, take a left onto King Street to head down. So that was just a concern that I had, you know, with somebody being in that driveway right there. But that's something that I guess engineering will look at during the site plan. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the next application we have is UP-23-21. And this applicant is requesting a deferral to the February Planning Commission meeting. We are waiting on a traffic impact analysis to be submitted. And we are hoping that he gets it in, in time to be heard at that meeting, but I'm not sure. Any questions about that? And then the last application, UP-2320. This was for the self-service storage facility on Airline Boulevard, and the applicant has decided to withdraw this application. So we no longer need to take any action on it.
So point of information on that one. Is it withdrawn for future consideration, or is it withdrawn...do we know?
Oh, so, yeah, they just withdrew this particular application. The way that we recently changed the code, or, you know, at this point, they can resubmit at another time, or, yeah, they're welcome to do whatever they want. But this particular application, they decided to withdraw.
Yeah, I didn't know if they were already, like, in the process, working with you all, and they're like, no, we're gonna hold off because of some other issues, or we can even say...
The applicant did not mention whether they were going to pursue the development at a later date or not. Staff had recommended denial, and so they were adjusting the elevations to kind of hopefully make it fit with the neighborhood. You know, they reduced the level, the floors, or, yeah, the stories from four to three. Unfortunately, we...staff still felt that we couldn't change the recommendation to approval. But we, you know, we did let the applicant know that, you know, that just because we recommend a particular, you know, option, that doesn't mean that that's what's gonna happen. We don't make the final decisions, City Council does, though. I'm not sure if they've scrapped the development or if they plan to, you know, adjust again and resubmit.
Julie, traditionally, once an application's in the process, on an agenda, we've taken a vote just to accept the withdrawal, just to put a...
Oh, okay.
So I think we should...
Okay, so I guess we will be taking it.
May I ask a question, not on this one, but actually, the other one came back around. I was thinking of it and had computer issues all day today, so I hadn't had a chance to take, type my notes like I want to. So the three driveways, I know there's portions of King Street that does have no parking areas. Would this be designated as a new parking area for street parking?
Not that...I guess I'm not...
There are certain places, like, on page three of the packet, there's actually pictures of cars that are parking in front of the site. That wouldn't be possible, I don't think, according to the picture on page 20 of the packet. Doesn't look like you could fit a car in between those and have street parking.
Yeah, I guess that would be determined during the site plan review to see if there is adequate space. But I would agree that it doesn't appear that you could park on that, that you would be able to park on that section of King Street. I don't know if they'd actually put up signs, though, that said no parking.
I go that way often. In some, in some, certain areas, there are cars parked along the street.
Yeah.
And in some areas, it's not.
I think to your point, though, it's just not gonna be the minimum allowable space to fit a vehicle between the two, between the three driveways. So they'll probably make, I think it's, I forget what it's like, 15 feet probably from that last driveway before they would allow parking. So they would have to have at least that one sign for where it starts.
Okay, I'll have to ask, but I believe that engineering would figure out if signage is needed at that time.
So I know, going back to this one, the apartments or condos or townhouses down the street, they do have the parking in the rear.
Right.
They do have some. Was this lot not large enough for it to be?
So this was actually discussed. They did not, they did not believe, I believe, because Amy kind of started working with this applicant. I don't believe that there was adequate space that they thought in the back for the rear-loaded, because I know they discussed the rear-loaded garages. The applicant will be more familiar with why they landed on the front-loaded. But the reduction in the width was both an engineering and planning recommendation. So we kind of discussed that with him, but we weren't sure that...he wasn't sure if he wanted to re-engineer the site plan if he could get approval this way. So it's something that I believe that they're open to, though. If your recommendation would be based on the fact that there are rear-loading garages, he did indicate that.
Okay. And just as a side note, I guess I want to see, does the city have a process before the applications are submitted to us? Like where the departments get together and meet with the developer and go over this? Before it's submitted to get kind of an idea from, yes, you're gonna need, you know, a retention pond, you know, so that it's already kind of gone through some sort of process?
Right, so we have a pre-application program and a planning assistance program. They're strongly recommended prior to filling out a use permit application and applying, but they are not required. But we do give a preliminary check for compliance with the zoning ordinance. If there's anything outstanding that we think engineering could give a preliminary review on, sometimes we'll do that. But then, once it's submitted, there's just the interdepartmental review, and that's what provides the comments and the staff report.
Okay.
But that's it, yeah.
Well, I can appreciate that engineering, you know, and you guys have already looked at that. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Regina, do we have anything? All right. Well, I guess this concludes our staff meeting, and we will adjourn in the conference room, our City Council room, at 1:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Happy New Year. I would like to welcome you all to the Planning Commission meeting today, Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, in the Portsmouth City Council chambers.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Four members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes from the December 5th, 2023, public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion. Commissioner O'Gee?
I move for acceptance of the December 2023 minutes as presented.
We have a motion, we need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the December 5th, 2023, public hearing, and you will be voting electronically. The minutes are approved by a vote of four to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, at 12:30 PM, City Council Chamber, City Council Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their February 13th, 2024, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones if you have not already done so. Our first item. UP-23-19 West Haven. Joseph Pulley with Arnold Marketing, Armhold Marketing Services, requests a use permit to construct a three-unit townhouse development on an approximately 0.22-acre parcel at 4423 King Street in the urban residential UR zoning district. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low-to-medium-density, single-family residential uses. The property is owned by Armhold Marketing Services and is further described as Tax Map 308, Parcel 75. Our staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, members of the Portsmouth Planning Commission. Good afternoon, Vice Chair.
Pardon me, if you could please speak into the microphone.
It's right here.
Yes, sir.
Is that better?
Thank you.
I'll start over then. Good afternoon, members of the Portsmouth Planning Commission. Also, Ms. Coleman, Vice Chair of the Commission.
My name is Joe Pulley, and I am here on behalf of the owners, Armhold Marketing Services. I appreciate the opportunity to bring this application forward to you. Application site is 4423 King Street. Our use permit request is for the approval to construct three new townhouses, townhouse units, which we feel will be a nice addition to the neighborhood. This will involve the resubdivision of the three existing lots into three new lots that will beat the code for the townhouse lots. There'll be no increase in the number of lots, although the lot widths will slightly change. There will still be only three units or three lots with this resubdivision. The owner has considered the possibility of restoring the 75-year-old home, but it is in complete disrepair, and there is no viable way to renovate the home in a way that makes economic sense. Therefore, the owner will be demolishing the home to allow for the construction of the three new townhouse units if the permit is granted. We have met with staff, and as a result, have made several changes to the architectural plans and the site...
Mr. Pulley, pardon me, I'm sorry. We have a court reporter here, and she's having a hard time hearing you. If you could, please try to put the microphone up or speak a little louder, that way we could get it...
I'll do that.
That's better, thank you.
Do I need to start over?
No, sir.
Okay. We have met with the staff, and as a result, have made several changes to the architectural plans and the site plan to meet the code requirements for this district. The application was also reviewed by staff from a traffic standpoint. It was determined that a traffic impact study is not warranted. It is anticipated that the three new townhouse units will have a minimal traffic impact on King Street. Early on in this process, I reached out to the West Haven Civic League to solicit comment on our application. I had also requested several meetings with the Civic League in order to discuss our proposal. Initially, there were no comments, but later in the process, I received a comment about eliminating the front-loading garages... Excuse me, and using rear-loading garages instead. I advised the owners of the property, and initially, they were receptive to the idea, but later decided they did not want to use that option and felt that the front-loading garages were a better option from a visual perspective. When looking at the townhouse lots, two units or two lots over from us, they were not happy with the appearance of the parking lot layout for the rear-loading garage at this site. After careful consideration, the owners opted for the front-loading, single-driveway layout as approved by staff. However, if adding the rear-loading garages would allow the use permit to move forward with a recommendation for approval, we would be happy to revise the plan to include the rear-loading garages, or we would accept a deferral so that the plans could be changed. The city staff has recommended approval of the application as submitted. The owner is in agreement with the proposed conditions in the staff report, and it is also aware that additional comments or conditions may be required during detailed site plan review, and he agrees to abide by any development conditions as well. Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. I'll do my best to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Pulley. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Heinz?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Good afternoon, and wish you a Happy New Year as well. So I have concerns about the three driveways that are going out onto King Street as it is. As a lifelong resident at Portsmouth, I know how busy King Street can be. It is also serves as a potential way for people who are underserved in terms of medical facilities on the opposite end to be able to get to Maryview Hospital. So I do have some concerns there. And also, kind of highlighted in our staff report that we received, it appears that there's been vehicles parking right in front of the proposed development as it stands without any additional residences there. So I, and if you kind of do the math here on the sketch found on page 20 of our staff report, it doesn't appear that there could even be additional parking spaces for street parking. And, you know, it was identified by staff that the parking garage itself would be one parking space, and then the driveway would be the second parking space for that, so therefore, it'd meet the requirement. But I do think that there's some concerns there, and I personally would welcome something in the rear of the development to alleviate what could be happening there on King Street. And I think there's a lot of practical things that you're, you know, to be able to sell this would also be, and I think Commissioner Coleman brought this up in the earlier meeting, that who's gonna really want to make the great car swap? You know, in the morning, if the person that's leaving their residence first has to be moved out and around. I think that there's certainly some issues there. Also, I do think it does, squeezing three units on that lot, even though it's one of the larger lots in the area, I think there were some concerns there as well, that the residents, I think, have some merit there in that.
We originally designed the site where we would have double-wide driveways, but the staff weren't really happy with that. And then we found out that the garage...
Mr. Pulley?
Oh, I'm sorry. The garage counted as one of the parking spaces needed for each unit. But we certainly would consider putting the rear-loading garage on the site. And I think that would probably help answer your question, that we're more than willing to do that. I know that would need a, we'd have to defer that, I'm sure.
Yeah, it certainly would take care of my concern. I'm not sure about the rest of the commission, but I certainly think that adding three residences and emptying out onto King Street, which, again, is a very busy spot at times, could cause some concerns from safety, and I think also just, and quite frankly, being a good neighbor around those, it's gonna be stuck with six, potentially six extra vehicles emptying onto a very busy road already.
Possibly moving the driveways to the rear of the site might alleviate some of that traffic backing onto King Street. We're happy to do that.
I appreciate your willingness, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Pulley.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-23-19. I have no registered speakers. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, we are in need of a motion.
Madam Chair. I'd like to recommend deferral of this application, move for a deferral of the application to allow staff and the applicant to work together for the driveways to not empty out onto King Street and to the rear of the proposed development.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer until the next meeting, if possible, for improvements for the site plan for the rear-loading.
May I ask a question of clarification to the staff?
Of course.
Thank you. How long would you think that it would need to work with the applicant for that? Is that a next meeting kind of thing, or is that something that you might need, you know, a couple of months to work through that?
So we would need the updated site plan by, like, January 17th in order to be heard at the February 6th Planning Commission meeting. after February 6th, Planning Commission meetings, so it would depend on if the applicant is able to provide that, and that would be, you know, the sooner, the better.
May I ask the applicant a question as well, for clarification?
Of course.
Yes, sir.
Is the timeline that Mrs. Chop presented doable for you and your firm?
I think we can get that done, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Important clarification on the motion that was made, I don't think we initially made the motion with a date in mind, it was just defer to a future date. So, so I just want to make sure that we don't have it strictly in the record as the February's meeting, just to a future meeting.
All right, so we have a motion and a second?
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
You do actually need a specific meeting date in your deferral motion, so I'm sorry for the confusion.
No problem.
Madam Chairman, may I amend my motion, please?
Absolutely.
I make a motion that we defer application, use permit 23-19 to the February meeting to allow both applicant and staff to work on driveways that would be near the rear of the development that would not impede the, the traffic pattern on King Street.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Madam Chairman, we have a motion and a second to defer UP-23-19 to our February the 6th, 2024 meeting. You will be voting electronically. This item is deferred by a vote of five to one. Our next item, UP-23-21 Hattonsville, Leaf Burner, requests a use permit to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard on an approximately 5.4 acre parcel at 3015 Airline Boulevard in the light industrial IL zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. The property is owned by Burner Properties, 3015 Airline LLC, and is further described as Tax Map 574, Parcel 3. This item is deferred to the February the 6th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. We will, if there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have five minutes to speak.
All right, good afternoon, my name is Ben Anderson, I'm at 230 West Tazewell Street in Norfolk, Virginia, 23510. So, I would like to speak in favor of the conditionally used permit for 3015 Airline Boulevard. My focus is representing owners and occupiers of industrial real estate in the Hampton Roads region, such as the subject property on Airline Boulevard. Many tenants in our local economy, especially here in Portsmouth, have needs for industrial outdoor storage or industrial service facilities of this nature. The subject property has been, been used for parking tractor trailers since the early 2000s, though it's my understanding that zoning changes have now required a CUP for this type of use. I'm working with multiple tenants currently that have expressed their frustration with the city of Portsmouth and their inability to operate in Portsmouth with recent changes in zoning regulations, forcing them to seek locations in Suffolk, Chesapeake, and other neighboring municipalities to take their business elsewhere. The subject property is in excellent condition with approximately three acres of paved yard area that is fenced and secure with great access, one mile from Interstate 264, and an existing BMP is in place for proper stormwater runoff. The CUP will allow for more prospective tenants to consider this property in Portsmouth for truck driving, parking, and related uses, which is important for the Port of Virginia region and the city of Portsmouth, home to Virginia International Gateway, and many warehousing and logistics-related employers and taxpayers. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mister Anderson. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-23-21. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, we will keep this item open until our February the 6th, 2024 public hearing. But we are in need of a motion to defer to our February the 6th, 2024. Commissioner G.
Commissioner G.
I move for deferment of UP-23-21 until the February 6th, 2024 meeting.
And?
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Motion and a second to defer UP-23-21, and you will be voting electronically. This, this item is deferred by a vote of six to zero. Our last item, UP-23-20 Kingsgate Crossing, Don Scott Esquire, on behalf of Safe Stow Real Estate Company LLC, requests a use permit for a three-story, approximately 104,175 square foot self-service storage facility on approximately 2.2 combined acres of land located at 3206, 3208, and 3210 Airline Boulevard, and a portion of 3290 Airline Boulevard in the general mixed-use zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates these properties as part of a mixed-use corridor. The properties are owned by Baton Two LLC, and are further described as Tax Map 582, Parcel 2, 3, and 4, and a portion of Tax Map 583, Parcel 4. The staff coordinator is Julie Chop. The applicant has withdrawn this application. Madam Chair, we need a vote to accept the withdrawal on this application.
We do need a motion to accept withdrawal of the application.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to draw the application for UP-23-20.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Motion and second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is withdrawn by a vote of six to zero.
All right, Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today, is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, do you have any business to bring up before the commission? Ms. Chop? Anything? All right, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.